Twenty five Regular Board of Education meeting. May we please number the call? Sandra Bradford?
Here.
Barry Aldschuler?
Here.
Leah Collister-Lazari?
Here.
Katie Carum?
Here.
Erin Chan Ding?
Here.
Steve Wang?
Here.
Diana Clopton?
Here.
All right, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome and thank you for adjusting to our Monday evening special, special date of a Regular Board of Education meeting. I'm going to turn it over right away to Dr. Winkelman for some special presenters we have today.
Yes, we have a few students joining us this evening. Our first group is students from our Barrington Transition Program. I'd like to welcome John Delorio and Angel Zavala, and I believe Ms. Romero is also coming up to join them, and they're going to give an update on things going on in our transition program.
Awesome.
Come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
I love that you have name tags.
Awesome.
Aww.
You look very official.
So we have a little, small presentation that will go ahead and shares to help Mr. Angel Zavala and Mr. John Delorio help with the presentation, so we'll go ahead and present that information. Great, but I'll get us started. So Barrington Transition Program, we really have worked hard to develop our own vision for the program. It's grown quite a bit, and we'll highlight that during our presentation tonight, but we have taken our district's mission to empower personal excellence in every learner and really kind of created a vision or hopes for the future through our vision statement, which indicates that the Barrington Transition Program will provide our young adult learners the T-Lear support and services they need while simultaneously serving as a bridge that connects them with local adult agencies and services and community resources as they cross over into the next chapter of their post-secondary life, enabling them to reach the highest level of independence possible in the areas of education, training, employment, and living skills based on their own unique goals and needs. And so two of our Barrington Transition Program team members here tonight are definitely highlighting that and what they'll share with you this evening. So two of our priorities this year, as we think about our vision for Barrington Transition Program, we've really worked to continue to grow awareness of the program and knowledge across the district and what transition services are to better serve the needs of all of our students in Barrington 220. So we want our earliest learners, all the way through our high school students, to be aware of what transition services can offer and what the program is about. We've also really worked to expand our education, employment, and social opportunities for our current BTP students within the community, and we'll highlight some of that tonight as well with some of our partnerships with local, local job sites, as well as opportunities to partner with other, to partner with other transition programs and build social opportunities for our students.
It says, "BTP has a total of 22 students at this time, and each week the students in the program have the opportunity to participate in the following functional academics instruction, daily living skills, social skills group, onsite job coaching, community-based instruction, social activities, and community service."
And do you participate in those each week?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Functional academics has focused on building BTP students' literacy and math skills through real-world application. Throughout the school year, BTP students read about current events, learn about digital citizenship, practice reading recipes and measure items for baking, work on money management and baking skills. Living skills are built into the daily schedule at BTP, and each student has a task they complete as part of their day-to-day responsibilities. As there is a significant focus on increasing independence and being part of a community.
So our pictures on each slide kind of highlight these activities that our students are doing each week to work on their independence and becoming contributing members at the program, but as well as part of the community. Our students each week also participate in a social skills group that's facilitated by our Barrington Transition Program School Psychologist, Natalie Pollak, who's here with us this evening, and supported by Concorving and our other teacher, Susan Podolsky, as well as our speech pathologist, Rachel Miller. So they've worked really hard to help the students interact in their cohorts. We have two cohorts right now with one another and have also worked on our Character Strong lessons that have been infused this year into that, that social skills time as well.
Well, sorry. An overview of BTP itself, students have the ability to work various job sites on occasion. This year is based on their certain interests, skill sets, and goals for the future, such as if someone wanted a lot of work experience because they're not sure, or if they wanted to specify any one thing. They receive onsite in the moment job coaching to hone their skills and practice responding to feedback. These job sites includes the library, House of Hope, Early Learning Center, restaurants, Maggo, sorry, Mago, Egg Harbor, I worked out there as well, and Rosati's, senior living facilities such as Alton Estates or Deer Park Village, District, sorry, District Administrative Center, and the Law Office. Community-based instruction, a key component of the program structure. We take weekly trips, usually at the end of the week, Friday usually, out to the community to practice and apply a variety of skills they've worked on during functional, sorry, functional academics and social skills group. A few CBI highlights include visiting the grocery stores for shopping, restaurants, sometimes for lunch as well, museums even for learning centers, college and university programs where we might find our own futures if we're interested at all, adult day programs, along with a variety of many other things, even one on a nature hike on the bus trips, which I found very nice. Another overview, students have a variety of opportunities to engage in social activities with each other and alone sometimes, along with their fellow teachers and classmates, including partnering with other local transition programs. Exciting opportunities include visiting comprehensive transition and post-secondary CTP programs, Friendsgiving, and the Second Annual BTP Bake Off with District 20, sorry, 2020, sorry, District 220 administrators. Apologies, I don't know if I could have said that right.
Great.
So we also have some highlights from those activities shared there. Dr. Winkelman was a part of one of our teams, and his Bake Off team did very well. So a look ahead, our future is looking bright, and we use that term in a couple of different ways. So it's bright in terms of our growing student population. So last year we had 10 students. This year we're at 22 students and actually started the year with even more, but we had one student who has now successfully transitioned into a CTP program, another student who is competitively employed, so we're doing fantastic with our students really moving into life after, after school. And then next year we're projected to have 33 students, so really continuing to expand and then also growing those job site partnerships within the community. So we referenced the Law Office earlier. We briefly also had an opportunity to work at a local pet place where some of our students assisted, had an interest in working with grooming pets, so they participated there. We've expanded our restaurants to Rosati's this year as well, so really trying to partner with the community and always open to new job sites that align with our students' skills and interests, and then expanding our micro business. So we started the year kind of taking all of our different creations and with our beads by BTP and our past pet blankets and bow ties and created Poppin' with Purpose, where we had a kind of pop-up shop that is continuing and traveling around the district to different schools, partnered with different PTOs, including Grove PTO, to sell. And at this point, we've expanded to create Bright Ideas Candle Company, which is our logo on there, and the students have worked incredibly hard to create candles that they're now selling at the pop-up shop. So really exciting things happening. So we're enjoying this year very much, but we're also really looking forward to '25, '26, and some new friends that we'll be inviting to the program next year.
Thank you. Excellent job.
Excellent. We do have a couple of gifts that our students wanted to make sure we handed out to our board and to Dr. Winkelman tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, okay.
They're scented. Correct, they're handmade and scented?
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
What do you attribute growing to 33 students? Is it just that the word is out there, it's becoming more popular, or is there really more of a population of eligible students that are matriculating through 220?
Yeah, so we, part of, one of our goals for our kind of vision is to ensure that we're helping to expand the understanding and knowledge across the district of what transition programming services look like and can do and should be providing support to certain students in our district. So we've created things, everything from partnering with our high school staff to offer some visits to the transition program to kind of see in person what we're doing there, ensuring that we have transition program representatives in some of our IEP meetings at the high school level, and really trying to get the word out earlier through, we created a pamphlet last year in multiple languages that we can have prepared to hand out at IEP meetings to families. So we've tried really in a couple of different ways to make sure that the information is out there. So I don't know that it's necessarily that we, we may, it's kind of probably both. We may have an expanding population of students, but also we're really trying to make sure that families and staff are aware of what the program is and how we can better serve our students.
And with that number, you feel confident with the addition that we did this year, we'll have enough room for everybody?
Yes, we've been working diligently to create a schedule. That's part of why we have cohorts too. So this year we have two, and next year we're already planning for three cohorts, and that's how kind of the space is shared. So we have students that might be on job sites while others are at the program. Some might be in social skills groups while others are eating lunch, so we have a rotation of schedule that we've been working together on for that.
Great.
Yeah, and we've loved the space, so we're very grateful for that.
Excellent.
You should just say it's the place to be.
It is the place.
Every time, like, oh, there it is. So it is so welcoming, so inviting, there's so much activity going on, and just so many good skills and just good vibes in there too. So I do think it's attracting more students and families to the program as well, just because of how conducive it is to meet the needs.
I think we all have stuff.
I know.
My favorite.
Very proudly wearing.
You guys have a favorite? Did you have a favorite thing from the pop-up shop?
What's one of the favorite things that you've sold at the pop-up shop? Beads, the point guards, the candles?
Also keychains, right? Oh, yeah. Keychains, the ones to put on your car keys.
Yep.
Like these?
And bracelets.
What about you, John?
Well, for one, not only enjoy the candles' looks themselves, they're also very creatively made, along with dyed wax beads, which is something I was not, you know, at all aware of until we started making them. I mean, we have so many that we need to sell, or we won't have room to put them in. That's how much a lot of our people enjoy making them at the center.
So not only do you, you package them up, but you actually pick the colors and dye the beads the color?
Try to make patterns too, by the time.
Love it.
You could sell them with a bracelet.
There you go.
I agree with Dr. Winkelman. Every time we visit the BTP, there's just so, so much positive energy, and I love, I just want to stay the whole day, right, and hang out with you all. I'm wondering, John, you said that you worked at Egg Harbor? I was wondering what you did there and, you know, what skills you might have learned or what you took away from that experience? And then Angel, I'm wondering from you, when I was there, you were working on the micro business. Is there anything in particular you learned from doing that, or anything else in the program that you're, you're carrying away with you? So one question for each of you.
Well, when I worked at, sorry, Egg Harbor, it was a nice experience overall. Mainly I was tasked with making napkin rolls specifically, having napkin along with a, all three main utensils, along with a sticker. Made surprisingly big amount, short amount of time. Also did some other stuff from time to time. We wiped the baby chairs and other facilities that were open. We filled the candy bouquet up. And from time to time, like mainly during the holidays, we even helped not only in taking some certain decorations down, we also put them up. We helped wrap, gift wrap boxes for the Christmas tree and decorated the tree itself, along with, we also worked in the kitchen with food though. Mainly it was just filling up little dishes with butter and jelly for customers to have, so saves them a big bit of trouble, I suppose.
Yeah.
Overall, plenty of work experience in this student.
Great. Very useful, useful tasks and things. Do you have, oh, yeah, yeah. So Angel, when I was there, you were working on the micro business aspect. I was wondering, you know, for that, I think, do you vote on the different products you make? And, you know, did you, did you have something that you are taking away from that micro business part that you're like, wow, this is really cool, and I didn't expect to learn this? Or anything else from BTP that you want to talk about?
I like to make those candles.
These candles, yeah. That's great. They're so cool. Do you vote? Do you vote as a cohort on what you want to make? Because I know that, you know, we've enjoyed everything from Barkington to the beads to the candles, or how do you decide what your, what products you're going to put your
We, we talk about it as a, as a group.
Kind of a majority vote type thing, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same as us.
That's how we work. That's how we make decisions.
Most people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's excellent. Really appreciate you guys.
Thank you for coming.
And bringing your special staff with you.
Yes, very special staff. That is how BTP is, so amazing students and the staff really are fantastic, and the families. We have a couple here supporting us tonight, but they've really made all the difference, so. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you so much.
We do have a couple gifts for you taking the time tonight to come join us, whenever students come and present to the board.
Very nice.
Yeah. And we can take a photo together.
Is it okay if we take a photo?
Yeah. We can smile for a photo? Good.
We'll come around out front.
Yeah. I'm out in here. Right, time to take a photo. Time to take a photo.
Sorry? Thank you.
Their names.
You guys get the center.
Don't be annoying us.
It's not like I'm already a therapist.
Then two little.
You guys get one more picture. You did something bad. Send that. Ready, here we go. One, two, three. One, two. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Come on in. Thank you.
Did you get it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. They're messy, but that's okay. Yes. Yes. Thank you. A little decoration.
All right, well, next up is my report. Please take your time. I have a very short report. Welcome back from spring break. I trust everybody had a really relaxing time. I'm really impressed by John and Angel and how they brought not just an update about the Barrington Transition Program, but how they weaved in our mission statement, Character Strong, and even applied our, our strategic plannings. So that was excellent. Great examples of empowering personal excellence in everyone. Since we haven't really had much school in session, I don't have a long report, but I do want to make sure that everybody knows, because I know you're all on the edge of your seats, trying to see where we are with our NCAA bracket. Diana is at the top right now. That's great. Congratulations, Diana.
You can thank AI.
I think I might be at the bottom, but anyway.
Sorry, y'all.
So that's, that's a lot of fun. So our place to be this week is, again, I'll mention that tomorrow, especially for the civic students in the room, is Election Day, so we've got a lot of local positions open, so please come to the polls. And then upcoming, very exciting things, the same weekend though, so lots of things for you the weekend of April 11th through, 10th through 13th. We have the Orchessa Spring Dance Concert at the high school, and Barrington Middle School Station Campus has the play Matilda Jr. So please weave those into your schedules. And that's all I have to report today. So next up is public comment. We have one person signed up for public comment, so Lauren, you can go ahead and come forward. This is the time that we set aside for public comment.
Are you in three minutes?
Yeah. Let me just read, let me just read what, just because you haven't been here recently, so. So the board values your thoughts and opinions, and we ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the board equity statement, where we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community, and you have agreed to the rules set forth in our policy as you signed up. And just a reminder that this is a board meeting that occurs in public and not a public meeting. It's not a, public comment is not a conversation, and if any of your comments require follow-up, then we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up. So Lauren, with that.
Well, thank you. Hello, I'm Lauren Holland. I'm here to talk about the calendar and that the calendar talk isn't just about extending Thanksgiving break, e-learning, or new contractual obligations. This is about our children and the increasing disruptions to their learning. The district has told us and you at the last meeting that 220 has 176 days of student attendance. However, this is not accurate. Our students are in the building for 174 days. I don't know if that meets state requirements, that's not my responsibility to determine. However, it is the board's responsibility to ask tough questions, get to the truth, and ensure that accurate and transparent information is being shared with the community. Additionally, not all of those days provide equal instructional time. Only 132 days have full schedules of instruction. Forty-two days are disrupted. Forty-two. Lake Zurich 95, District 95, has 177 student attendance days, with 173 being uninterrupted. That's only four with a short schedule. I have not found another district with four early release days, 38 early dismissals, five in services, 3.5 days for parent-teacher conferences, and two non-attendance dates that are not recognized by the state as a holiday. As a community, we need to know, why does our calendar look so different in terms of instructional time compared to surrounding districts? Meeting the minimum state requirements is not a standard that 220 should aspire to. The district has admitted that the current calendar submitted to ISBE was not in compliance. The board has since been told that we are now in compliance. The community has asked the district to submit an accurate calendar to ISBE now. We were informed that it would be submitted on the last day of school. Beyond the mistake of early release dates, there are eight additional days that are not coded correctly. We have asked the district how they can confirm that the calendar meets state requirements without first submitting it and receiving approval. There has not been a response. We are not accusing the district of wrongdoing. We are simply asking for transparency. Every other district in the state submits a correct calendar. Why is 220 delaying the process? There's also been a lot of talk about e-learning and this new plan. However, not one person has acknowledged or apologized for all the learning loss that has happened over the last three years. Instead, we've been told it's going to get better. Board members, do you know if your community supports e-learning instruction with or without this plan? That question has never been asked to us as a community. Silence that assumption of, but parents don't want to make up the days. You don't know that. Ask us. Be transparent and present that there are other options to build increment weather days into a schooling calendar year. These are our asks. Include the above e-learning question in the calendar survey. This isn't just about the calendar, it's about disruption. Ask the district to submit an accurate calendar for '24, '25 to ISBE now, and ask the district to explain why they're saying 176 days is happening when the actual number is 174. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment. Dr. Winkelman, I just want to make sure that we do have, we have submitted the upcoming calendar already to ISBE, I understand? Is that correct?
So, yes, it's an ongoing process. We are required, like all school districts, at the end of the year to submit a final calendar.
Okay.
Right?
Right, right, right.
So I am hopeful. We don't have any more increment weather or emergency situations that might require us to make a different plan for a day or utilize e-learning, but it is a fluid process, because if that were to occur, we would update it again. So yes, we will continue to update with the state and meet our obligation once the school year is completed to turn in, like other districts. Dr. Byrne, I know you're closely monitoring that. Anything to add on to what I shared?
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so next up is your report.
All right. Thank you. So I have just three slides. As you mentioned, we only had a few days of school, and then we had spring break, so, but important work was going on throughout the school district. So my first slide, I'd like to share that over the past several weeks, we have been working to fill our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and Student Performance position. We had considerable interest and a very strong pool of candidates that applied for this role. Tonight, we are recommending Sarah Raab as the finalist that has been selected to lead this important position for our school district. Sarah brings a wealth of knowledge to the role, earning an undergraduate degree in elementary education from Augustiana College, and two master's degrees, one in reading and literacy, and another in school leadership. In addition, Sarah has prior school leadership experience as an assistant principal and building principal, and most recently, Sarah has led a large network of schools in Elgin U-46 as the executive director of elementary schools. So we're excited to recommend Sarah for this position. She is on the personnel report for the board's consideration later tonight. My next slide, I'd like to congratulate our qualified interpreters. We have three members of Barrington 220's interpretation and translation team. They recently completed the Illinois State Board of Education's training to become qualified interpreters for our IEP meetings. This training program was delivered through the University of Illinois College of Education. It began with 10 hours of training to earn the designation of qualified interpreter, and then 24 additional hours of training followed in interpreting all aspects of the individualized education plan, or commonly known as an IEP process. Participants then pass a final exam with both written and oral components. Qualified interpreters will continue to participate in ongoing professional development as they serve in this capacity. So I'd like to thank and congratulate our three interpreters, Diana Gomez, Hector Ontiveros, and Carolyn Murrow, for their efforts to get this important additional credential to provide that service for our community. It's important.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then we do have one last thing that had occurred. I mentioned this at the last meeting, because I just actually, that same day, that Tuesday, I was over at the high school visiting with some students, so, and I think we have four of our students here tonight, so if our high school students would like to come up and to the table to join me for this final slide. So before spring break, I spent some time during the lunch hour visiting with these students. I think there was 12 altogether that went down to the summit. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they participated in a student summit that was organized by the Illinois State Board of Education. This was the first ever student summit, bringing together high school students from across the state to share their experiences, advocate for their needs, and help shape the future of education in Illinois. I really applaud our state superintendent, Dr. Tony Sanders, for creating this unique opportunity to elevate student voices in education. And at Barrington High School, as I mentioned, we had 12 of the 125 students representing 40 different school districts.
Wow.
From all across the state that went down. They met at, Illinois State University hosted the event. So as I mentioned, I met with the students, and they shared that the summit was truly designed as a student-led discussion opportunity. I think as, as you described it to me, there was a lot of adults, but they were all on the perimeter. Dr. Tony Sanders, for creating this unique opportunity to elevate student voices in education. And at Barrington High School, as I mentioned, we had 12 of the 125 students representing 40 different school districts.
Wow.
From all across the state that went down. They met at, Illinois State University hosted the event. So as I mentioned, I met with the students, and they shared that the summit was truly designed as a student-led discussion opportunity. I think as you described it to me, there was a lot of adults, but they were all on the perimeter. You, really, the students were running all aspects of the summit. And throughout the day, they participated in roundtable discussions, and these were also topics that were generated by the actual Student Advisory Council, which is a group of students from across the state that consist of this advisory council. They actually generated the topics that the 125 students participated in. And they run various topics like mental health, education options, and counseling, student engagement, curriculum and resources, things that are important to our students. And I think one of the takeaways that the group shared with me before break was that, you know, we have a lot to be grateful for in Barrington, as they listened to and shared stories of their experiences in 220 and listening to other high school students from across the state. But we do have, we do have work. There's things that can be enhanced here in Barrington to add to our programming. And a couple of examples, we're continuing to pay attention to hands-on and real-life experiences in conjunction to the academics in the classroom, and then continuing to focus, like our strategic plan has objectives that are embedded, really looking at the well-being and mental health needs of our students. Those were two areas that they shared with me. So at this time, would like to give an opportunity for you to hear firsthand from a few of our students, and gold star for the four of you to come to a board meeting Monday after spring break. I know I invited all 12, but really appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight. So in addition to what I shared, anything that you would like to make sure our board understands of what the experience was like, being able to get together with high schoolers from across the state?
Hmm.
They weren't this shy in the meeting. I promise you that. I had pizza and cookies and stuff, too. That may have helped.
Probably.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I thought it was a really interesting experience for everyone. I think the greatest thing about it was the fact that we were able to see, like, perspective from different kinds of schools. Of course, Barrington High School, suburban area, around 3,000 students, but it's really interesting to see a perspective from smaller school with like 400 students, or, you know, another school that has like up to 5,000 students. So I think overall, it was really collaborative. As you said, it was completely student-led. There really wasn't too much interference from, like, any adults. I think it was really interesting, the fact that, like, the student feedback does eventually get to people who have a lot of authority over education in Illinois, such as a few, like, Illinois State Board of Education members were there. So overall, I think it was a really interesting experience, and I think it's great that, you know, they're considering student feedback in this process.
That's great.
I think it was also good that a lot of the work that we do in student council is to better our school community, and it's nice to be able to listen to other students from other schools and what they do and how they run things in their own schools, which can help us with our own projects moving forward.
One thing that I'd like to add is, like, I thought it was amazing that, like, we could just connect with, like, so many, like, higher, like, power people, like, the State Board of Education. We were able, I was able to sit down and talk to one of the members for, like, 10 minutes, just about, like, my experiences in student council and, like, the school. So I thought that was a really special thing to do, and just a great way to connect, and would love to go there again next year.
One of the things I really loved was the diversity of students that were at each roundtable, because we were split up into, like, four different tables, each with, like, 10, 15 kids. I was able to hear the perspectives of new freshmen and a lot of different seniors. So overall, in addition to all the different school communities, like, the 400 kids versus, like, the 1,500 kids, it really just allowed me to grasp, like, a different perspective of our school community overall. And one example of that is our school food. I heard a lot of complaints at our tables about some of their school food. I'm like, wow, I'm really grateful for the things you have at Barrington. So.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for the students of this? It was a first-ever student summit, which I, again, I just think is so important. You know, as adults, we have a lot of perspective, but our students also have perspective that I think is worth considering. And having an opportunity like this, there will be a presentation, is my understanding, where members of that Student Advisory Council will present to the State Board of Education some things that they would like the State Board to consider for the upcoming school year and in the future. When that becomes available, I'll definitely share that with the board as well. But any other questions or follow-up for our students?
Was there a favorite topic?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, was there, like, a favorite topic that you guys talked about at the summit?
I would say my favorite topic was probably about mental health, as a lot of students, like, got to share their own experiences, and I got to, like, see, like, different perspectives on, like, how, like, their schools treat mental health and stuff like that.
One thing I really liked was how we discussed the usage of AI in the classrooms. I'm also part of the district's social media AI advisory committee. So I think along with that perspective and the perspective I learned at the summit, I was really able to see how different students, like, find the impact of AI in the classrooms, the pros and the cons, and what they really enjoyed and what they didn't about their usage.
Yeah, for me, my personal, like, favorite topic, we talked a lot about curriculum, which was really interesting to listen to. Kind of just talked about, like, I know, like, at VHS, we have a lot of different options with, you know, CTE, AP courses, a lot of different options for students. And so I guess it was really interesting to discuss with other students, potential additions that could be made to the curriculum as, you know, the future comes.
I have nothing to add. I think that was great.
That's great.
That's great.
Do you have a question, too?
I just want to commend you for being leaders in your high school and taking this opportunity to share with other high school students. I went to something similar to this when I was your age in student council. But I'm curious, I'm thankful that you're happy about the food here. What other things are you happy about here, and what ideas do you have to improve the future for us? Because we're all ears for these kinds of things. No pressure. You can email us later.
A lot of discussion, at least in a group that I was in, was about the counseling departments at different schools. And at least just, like, upon reflection of our own, I think we have a lot of counselors, which is really great in comparison to a lot of other schools, especially, like, the small rural schools that may only have one or two for the whole school. And I think one thing that can always be improved upon is just connections with your counselors, making sure that they're available. It can be definitely hard for some people to get in contact with their counselors at times. So I think they're readily available here, but just making sure that the connections with the students is, like, always improving.
I personally found, like, the mental health discussion really interesting. Reason for that is, a lot of students from other schools, especially smaller schools, a lot of them complain about the lack of mental health resources, lack of school psychologists, lack of counselors, kind of ties into that. So I think that definitely made me really grateful for, like, all the mental health resources that are available in the district. I know we have, like, onsite school psychologists. I know we have a lot of mental health resources. We even have, like, you know, like, therapy docs come in for the week of finals. And overall, I think there's a lot of resources to help students with mental health and stress. And so I think that's something that our district does really well.
One thing that I noticed is, I liked how Barrington, like, offers more, like, APs and, like, honors to other students. Like, I forgot which school, but some, like, more rural schools saying how, like, it's really hard to, like, get into the classes they want to get, because it has so many prerequisites. And I know a few classes have, like, prerequisites at Barrington, but it's a lot easier to just, like, sign up and see how it is. And I like how you, like, if you don't want to do it, you can drop out, like, two weeks later, without any, like, any, like, harm to your, yeah, any consequences.
One thing I'm really like about this district is the vast amount of resources we have. So for example, with our iPads, I mean, the amount of collaboration that we're able to do with Google Docs, or just sharing things. And I'm also part of our computer science classes at the high school. So even having a MacBook just makes my life a lot easier when I have an essay in my English class or something. So I'm really thankful for those resources.
We'll be hearing more about them tonight.
We will.
I have one more question. Dr. Winkelman did say that your feedback was to pay attention to those real-life experiences and opportunities, and also a few of you already addressed mental health and well-being. I'm curious, could you elaborate a little bit more? Do you feel like, you know, it's one of those things where you're wishing maybe every student had access to maybe an array of real-life experiences or internships? Or is it just wanting more available or more of a variety? And then with the mental health portion, you talked about our resources, and I know we have great staff, but are you, are you looking at, are there specific times, like, around, I don't know, like, college application time, where it's just more stressful that you would like us to kind of, you know, really kind of have more resources there, or when there's a crisis, or something like that? So could you elaborate a little bit more on how?
I thought you were going for a third part.
I was. I think I just promised two-part questions, and I'm sticking to that.
And so on, and so on.
For the mental health portion, I heard a few students from Nutria during the summit, and they were saying how in their health class, like, they have a whole, like, mental health unit, and, like, training their students to, like, know how to respond to when a student is coming out to them about their mental health, which I think that's a, like, an amazing thing that, like, that should be implemented in our mental health, or in our health class. As, a lot of students just don't know how to reach out to, as they don't have, like, some people don't have trusted adults, but they would have friends. And if their friend can handle their, with, like, how they're talking about their mental health, then I think that would be great.
So an example would be maybe a friend who is in some crisis and is maybe talking about harming themselves or something like that, and another friend is like, I don't know if you're serious.
Yeah, yeah.
Even if you were, I don't know what to do, that kind of thing.
Yeah, like, training them, like, how to respond. Like, I think Nutria had, like, they said they had, like, a step-by-step guide on how to, like, deal with when someone's, like, coming out to you about their feelings, which I think that's really awesome.
Thank you.
I think one particular thing, I think that you mentioned was, like, counseling. I definitely think we're in a somewhat good spot. Like, I know, I think it was Downers-Grove-South High School. I know they talked a lot that, like, students there struggle to meet with their counselors, but I definitely think one school that was impressive was Illinois Math and Science Academy, in terms of their students really form, like, strong connections with their counselors. I think that's just because, like, the ratio of counselors to students, you know, I think that students have a lot more opportunities to meet with their counselors and form that relationship. I know that's, like, something we struggle a bit with, considering that we have, I mean, almost three out of the students for not too many counselors. In addition to that, I know Claire and I are seniors, and so around the time of college applications, we only have two, like, post-secondary counselors at the moment. That's Ms. Stroh, Ms. Moody. So I know they get really, really busy at that, you know, November, September time of college applications. So I definitely think that's something that is an area of improvement, potentially, just having more counselors, more secondary counselors available to help students.
I think parents could use it, too.
Yeah.
Good point.
These are great. These are such great suggestions. Yeah, it really reminds me of, we have an annual meeting of all 850 or so school board members in Illinois, and we just, we exchange ideas on what different school districts are doing, and it seems very similar in terms of what our high school's doing, and just kind of taking ideas from each other and suggestions. This is really great and so helpful. Thank you for going. I'm assuming there's going to be a second student summit in the future?
I think, from what I've heard, it was successful. But I think they may tweak some of the format. It was, you guys were telling me that the room itself was a little bit large and, like, right, like, so they
Hard to hear people.
Hard to hear and so forth. So, but it was the first time they tried it, right? I mean, you can see in the pictures here, it was in a large center on campus at the Bone Student Center. And so I think they recognize they may want to logistically do things differently, but my understanding is, yes, this is something that they would like to do annually, to bring student voice to the conversation and help inform what we can do as a state to make sure we're meeting our students' needs.
Thank you so much.
So I know at least Jimmy, you've been here for a while in the district. I'm assuming the rest of you have been in the district for a while. So we had a, we've been talking about the calendar a little bit and e-learning a little bit. And I'm assuming you have, since you've been here a little bit longer, you've experienced tacking a day on to the end of the year versus having an e-learning day. And I'm just curious what your thoughts are on one versus the other.
I honestly kind of like adding a day, because e-learning days, like, they're, they're great, like, when they happen, like, but I can't, like, go outside or do much. So I end up just, like, sleeping in or something, like, just wasting my day. But if you add it at the end of the school year, I feel like that's great, because I get to be at school with my friends for another day instead of just wasting away at home.
Fair.
That's a fair point.
I think in theory, the e-learning days are nice for high schoolers to be able to just kind of stay home. But I find that, especially when it's asynchronous, teachers will assign stuff, but it doesn't always necessarily get turned in. I would say, there's been a handful of times where the assignments kind of slip through the cracks, and it's supposed to affect your attendance, but sometimes it doesn't really. So I think maybe just adding a day would be better, just in terms of, like, instruction and stuff like that.
I definitely think that e-learning days can definitely be used as, like, a kind of last resort kind of resource. I definitely think there's, like, a few flaws with e-learning days, unfortunately. I know, like, there's, like, some classes where, you know, if there's e-learning days, unfortunately, you can't really get, like, tutoring or help during, throughout the day. Additionally, like, as Claire said, if you happen to not be able to turn an assignment, that unfortunately affects your attendance, and then, you know, kind of have to sort that out with the teacher or the attendance office afterwards. So I definitely think that there's a few unfortunate flaws with e-learning days.
I completely agree with what everyone else has said. I truly do, like, I do like the idea of the e-learning day, but with me in the last two instances, I had a test the very next day, and that test wasn't moved back. So being able to review for that test and kind of make sure I understood, like, understood the material became really difficult for me. Thankfully, my teacher did open up a Zoom call, so if anyone did want to come, they could. So I think maybe having, like, a little hybrid option. So let's say, you can do asynchronous work, but if you do have a question, a teacher could have a Zoom call open, you can just hop in, ask that question, and leave. So I think kind of having that mix between Zoom and asynchronous at the same time would be pretty nice.
That's great. Excellent.
That's great feedback.
Thank you.
Good to hear that. Yeah. And we love hearing from the students, even those of you in the back of the room, you know, that come.
Keep encouraging.
So there are opportunities for you to engage a little bit more with us. So we appreciate it. So thank you all very, very much.
So Claire, Jonathan, Jimmy, and Kavish, right? I got it right? All right. Thank you again for coming tonight and sharing your experience and going on that day, because I know, you know, that was a day you took to go down and really help represent our school district and be part of that important conversation. So thank you. As a little gift, I do have a Barrington t-shirt for you. So if you want to come up and grab this. But thank you for joining my report tonight.
Do you seniors know, have future plans decided?
Northwestern.
Northwestern.
You have a wildcat?
Yeah, I'm going to Ohio State.
Awesome.
Buckeyes.
You guys. Great job.
No question, Ms.? Thank you.
Thank you.
Northwestern.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Well, don't forget Ohio State.
We don't have any choices.
We say go Buckeyes. We go Wildcats, go Buckeyes.
Just had to put my two cents in.
All right. And I don't know how I could top that. So thank you again, students, for joining.
Thank you so much. All right. Thanks again. Okay, so informational reports are up next. Does anybody have any questions about informational reports? How about board committee reports? Anything to report?
Katie, facilities?
Facilities.
Go ahead, right?
All right.
Either way. So facilities met, and we talked, big surprise, about summer projects of 2026. We're, like, getting a year ahead, so we can plan things and bid them out sooner and then get better pricing. A lot of times, our summer projects include paving and roofs and playgrounds. What we're talking about this time is paving, masonry, prairies, sprinkler system replacement, Huff's piping replacement, lots and lots of pipes at Huff, and three playground replacements at Huff, Roslin, and the ELC. We do checks on the playgrounds every year to make sure that they're safe, and even though they might look beautiful and shiny and nice, they might have some issues. So they're on a rotation of when they need to be replaced. And then we talked about a new idea and a new concern. Illinois recently passed legislation requiring the installation of LED lighting in every building. This is for public, private, nonprofit, your house and mine. And so our new construction that we've done through our, our building in the last few years has compliant lighting, but our older facilities have fluorescent lighting. So we are looking into bidding this lighting replacement. So we are looking into bidding this lighting replacement all at once to ensure a financial competitiveness. And we are talking about spreading the project over multiple fiscal years, starting in the summer of 2026. This will support our sustainability and stewardship priorities and should be financially attainable with our larger capital projects budget. And with our ability to assess facility lifespans, their long-term facilities planning tool. So a few things will be held back because they are in better condition and don't need to be replaced on the timeline. Just like, you know, you reassess things in your home. And this will be coming forward in future board meetings with more details about this. The other update that some of you are super excited about is solar. We haven't talked about it, but there's been work going on behind the scenes with credits and rebates secured and assessments completed. So we will start installations this summer, beginning at the high school before moving to the middle schools and should be completed next school year without disrupting the school day. So our provider has done solar in school districts many times. So they know that mostly we want to have this happen in summer. But if we have to finish during the school year, they make sure that it's not going to disturb school. So I'm excited about that.
Excellent. Are we given a timeframe for the replacement of fluorescent lighting? State requirements?
2027.
Have it all replaced by 2027?
The problem will become that we can't purchase any new or we can't purchase fluorescent bulbs and we can't dispose of them in 20, as of 2027.
So lights out, literally.
Got to have.
Well, everybody's up against this deadline. So it's kind of a, how do we do this in a smart way and plan this out as a school district, even though it might be very expensive versus our other needs and wants? And so.
Because it's not just changing on a label. We have to change out the entire fixture to be able to support the new.
And of course, there's going to be competition with the contractors because all the schools are going to need to do that.
So we're really getting ahead of this now. And our buying power by bidding it all at once will be beneficial for us, even if we're splitting it over two summers. So it's a big project, but we're doing everything we can to do it in the most financially responsible way.
Excellent.
So I I went to the Transform 220 meeting. It was on March 19th. And for the community, you know, we passed the referendum last November, there's no shovels on the ground yet. There's nothing happening. So, you know, the community might be wondering, well, what what's going on? Where's our money going? But it's very exciting because right now all the work is behind the scenes. And there's a lot of excitement on this committee. If you remember a couple board meetings ago, we showed our timeline and the whole year of 2025, not the calendar year, not the school year, is really a year of design. And our architects and our construction managers are really being very thoughtful about what they're doing. They form focus groups for each of the projects. We've got lots of, you know, individual projects. And each of the individual projects has focus groups, including teachers and students and some of the community and the educators. And so there's a conversation ongoing. We just want to reassure the the community that, you know, we're working and very soon we'll actually have some preliminary drawings to share with the community. And we like the, all the unique perspectives. And one of the, you know, really important things that is kind of our backbone is accessibility and inclusivity. We've used the Neuro Balance Center here in Barrington for their expertise because the goal is really to have universal design, to make sure that we are accessible and inclusive and up to date on, you know, all the construction we do. So it was a very exciting meeting and just, you know, things are going to happen, even though nothing's, you don't see anything yet. There's a lot happening behind the scenes. So very exciting.
Lot of data collection. Excellent. Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move forward to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so our consent agenda includes open and closed minutes from March 18th as well as a revised personnel report. On the personnel report, you'll see a number of people with a new classification of intensive support assistant that better reflects the work that they have been performing in the classroom and really just appreciate the work that they've been doing already. And it equates to a roughly little bit, just more than a $3,000 increase for those that have applied and accepted that position. But there's quite a few of them on notice. We can, I think we'll see some more even in the next, in the coming personnel reports. Are there any other questions or comments? Let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
All right, motion passes and we will be able to congratulate Ms. Rabe at the next meeting.
Correct.
Awesome. All right, so we have a bunch of action items coming up here. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal due to reduction in force of Groups Two and Three teachers?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think that that's explanatory enough, but these are those that are being reduced honorably. And if there's room, we'll be bringing them back in future meetings. Is there any other questions?
I'm just wondering, are there no Group Four teachers in this or are they going to come at a later time?
No, there are no Group Four.
Great.
Thanks. All right, let's do a roll call.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the finance lease agreement with Apple Financial Services to lease for 36 months technology equipment at a cost not to exceed $4,349,000 in a service agreement with Apple Inc.?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we talked in great detail about this at our last meeting. And so this motion and the next one reflect those conversations. Are there any other questions or comments?
Not so much a question, I guess, just more of a comment. And I guess maybe a question. So did we, and I just want to make sure I understood correctly, did we commit to doing a study over the next year on the change of, of the change from iPads? I'm sorry, laptops to iPads for high school students?
Yes. So at the last meeting, we talked about outside of this process of approving a lease, it's been since 2021, Matt, is that right? Then for next year, starting that process of doing an in-depth study, and the board did receive a full report that Katie pointed out, it's on the website. We would replicate that detailed process.
Okay. And, oh, so so it's not just that study, it's the entire student body?
Yeah, I think we had talked about.
Want to make sure I'm understanding?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're now in 2025. It's been four years. We start that study next year, getting on a cycle of having those in-depth conversations, really gathering more information about the devices and so forth. And really starting to establish like a regular cycle, much like we do with our curriculum review process.
So if we decide to to change, would we be able to amend the contracts just so that we could get more laptops or more?
Leases that we're.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, correct.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, you're right. Would we be able, would we be able to amend those?
I'm not aware that we would be able to amend the contracts. I think the study would run during that lease cycle and would put us in a position, and Matt, I'll let you respond, that we would be set up to look at a different lease cycle. But I don't know the the details of the contractor conversations you've had with Apple, if there's penalties or so, or if there's any provisions that would allow us to do so.
So if we wanted to get out of a lease, we'd essentially have to pay it off early. And then we could, as soon as we own them, the devices, then we could sell them to an asset company just like we do right now with our paid-off leases. That would be one way to.
So there is an out and we would get, obviously, if we resold it after a year of use versus three years of use, they would get, they would get much better.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's the plan. All right, okay, that, I can live with that.
And thank you for reminding me of that revenue. As we, as we vote on these two leases, we do anticipate revenue up to, was what, about 1.3 million?
Adding, adding them.
Up to, adding them together, yeah.
Okay.
We saw that. So there's no further questions or comments. Can do a roll call.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Related, we have a motion to approve the finance lease agreement with Apple Financial Services to lease for 48 months of technology equipment at a cost not to exceed $1,318,500 and a service agreement with Apple Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, similar discussion. This is for the laptops. Any other comments or questions? Let's do a roll call.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding.
Yes.
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Katie Carum.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.